All right, good evening. Thank you for your patience. I'd like to call the tonight's meeting, county council meeting, to order. If we could please call it a roll.
Certainly, ma'am. Ma'am Brederhuis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Present.
Councilmember Chikolowski?
Here.
Councilmember Kizenski?
Here.
We have four of them.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Can you please join me in the pledge? All right. We are super pleased to have Dr. Gerardo here this evening. To, if you don't know, she is, she's keeping us all dry. Keeping us in touch with really climate change and resiliency and all this. And so, she's here this evening to give us an update for the town that we can then send out to the community. So Jennifer, thank you for coming this evening. We really appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
Oh, I don't think that's enough.
We'll change the slides for you.
I can also speak loud and clear.
Yeah, thanks. Otherwise, folks at home on YouTube, they won't hear. Wouldn't see how versatile you were.
All right. So, thank you very much for the invitation, Vice Mayor, the city manager. I think the invitation had also been expressed, and I believe it was fall week. Excuse me, sir. I apologize. It wasn't quite certain. So, thank you so very much for the invitation.
For you and NPR.
Thank you. And I remember, and in the context of the discussion on the resilience plan. And so, I made some statements about the importance of storage and implications, certain site considerations that relates to future water management challenges. That's what spurred things. So, just as a general context, we know that our water management system, and I know you all here in the town of Southwest Ranch has had a long history of understanding the challenges and complexity in managing secondary canal system for water management. That becomes increasingly difficult when we know that our downstream discharges are limited by what has happened with sea level rise. And in the context of the work we've been undertaking, we increasingly appreciate how important local storage is, as well as changes in our operations in order to deal with the combined challenge of increased rainfall, limitations on downstream discharges, and changes in the groundwater table. Just show here, it's not a local phenomenon. It's a national and global trend. We're planning for about 40 inches of sea level rise by 2070. I just got back from a trip from Boston. They're planning on the same sea level rise scenario. So, this isn't, you know, an abstract number. It's also pulled from the White House Task Force on sea level rise and the work of NOAA. We also know that increased rainfall intensification is occurring nationally, and it's happening locally. So, just the graphic on the bottom left there shows the trend in the amount of land area that's been impacted with extreme rainfall events across the United States. And so, it is an upward trend, particularly in the last several decades. With respect to sea level rise, we also know that we have a higher rate of sea level rise in our region and along the Atlantic coast. And in fact, we've seen along the Atlantic coast about a seven-inch rise since 2010. So, these are really significant numbers that affect our water management. Next slide, please. And so, just locally and anecdotally, we see the rise in our groundwater table, more than a foot and a half rise over the last several decades. And shown in the table here, what we did was around a way to 32-year period of rainfall. And we found that of the 10 most severe events that have occurred through this entire period, five of those were in just the last five years. In fact, we saw about three significant events in just the last 18 months. If we look at the April 23 event, maybe it's there two years now, the June 24 event, and then another June 20, or excuse me, December 24 event. So, the point is, is that while we talked historically about planning for a 100-year storm, it never meant that it couldn't occur more frequently. It just was the probability was .01 in any given year. So, what we have, though, is the evidence that year after year, and every three years minimum, we've been seeing a very significant rainfall event. And what that does is challenge our water management systems and our ability to move water for drainage and flood protection. Next slide, please. And so, over the course of the last 20 years, essentially, we've been working to build these changes into the requirements for infrastructure. We formally planned for sea level rise. We've modified our requirements for drainage and surface water management systems. And we've created standards out west with regards to tidal flooding. We updated just a couple of years ago and adopted a new map, which is a future conditions 100-year map. But this is all fine and good when you're looking at new infrastructure. The challenge that we have is, what about all of our existing communities where we're not slated for redevelopment? How do we deal with these water management challenges of the rest of our community moving forward? Next slide, please. And so, we began undertaking the development of a county-wide resilience plan. And it's significant that you've asked for this presentation this week because just this week, we launched the website that's supporting the plan. We launched the viewer that allows the community to get in and assess future conditions scenarios and the adaptation solutions that we modeled. And this was all put out in press. There was a Herald article this week, if you saw, and it's all related to this work. So, over a two-year period where we had strong endorsements from the municipalities, business community, we undertook this more comprehensive plan, looking at scenarios, solutions, and the economics for our region, and developing the online platform that I just mentioned. Next slide, please. So, what's most significant here is that in this assessment, our consulting team, which is Hazen and Sawyer, they aided us in developing these kind of categorical groupings. So, what do we know about these various areas in our county? And based upon the challenges or the opportunities in each of these areas, how are we going to address these needs moving forward? So, based upon different topographic and development characteristics, and water management characteristics, you all, the town of Southwest Ranches Falls, the grouping that was identified here is number four. And what does that mean? Well, in their assessments, and I flagged for you here, the identification of the need to maintain beneficial site storage. That was one of the primary recommendations that came from this area. And it's driven by the fact, like, what do we know about the groundwater table? We know your elevations are pretty low, and we know that there's probably not significant plans for major redevelopment. And so, maintaining existing storage is going to be really key. And we know that you went through this practice and working with the South Florida Drainage District over the years as well. Identifying target flood spots within the community that might be a focus of improvements and exploring, I think you know this one well as well, the importance of pre-storm operations. And what we're appreciating is that while we have a history of planning for big events, big storms, hurricanes, draw everything down in days, maybe weeks in advance, we're going to have to develop that nimbleness as well within our secondary system for these cloud burst events. Some of these more, they seemingly spontaneous events where we're going to have to act more quickly, nimbly, in an organized manner to draw down in advance those storms. So, I won't go through the rest of that, but yeah, there's characteristics for the rest of the community as well. Next slide, please. And so, when we undertook the modeling that was performed by Hazen, these were the types of strategies that were explored all across the board for flood risk reduction, include and approved management, including storage above ground, below ground, within our canal systems, or for infrastructure. A lot of this pertains to swales, which are heavily represented in your community. Improved conveyance, more pumps, more control structures, more active management, which is pretty well-developed within the South Florida Drainage District. And then, on the coastal side, more storm barriers, sequels, and elevating that infrastructure. Next slide, please. When we looked at water management strategies, and I think it's important to note here, because when I look at Southwest Ranches, it seems a little bare in terms of the identification of new areas for, say, enhanced swales. Why? Because they're so well-built out here already. You don't have the need as much to cover swales like other communities. But what that means is preserving onsite storage within the communities, preserving the swales may take enhancing those while they're coupled with different operational improvements. But this graphic shows how important that very fundamental feature is across the entire landscape. And you all have quite a bit of that already. Next slide, please. So, and I also saw here in your own parking lot that you've allowed for curvies to serve as parking, you know, the grassy areas. And that's some of what you're going to see across other areas that they're going to have to try to mimic in a way that you all have really embraced. But the deep swales, especially preserving swales when driveways are modified, making sure that those do not get flattened, that you ensure that culverts are provided where those dips are maintained. This is one of the things that works most fundamentally against our system. There may be opportunities to further recover and improve swales, file swales for storage. Where you do have adequate elevation and paving, there are opportunities to build storage underneath. But again, your elevations are quite low, so that's challenging. And then, improved canal operations. But I provide these examples because this is fundamentally what is integrated in the model. Next slide, please. So, what does performance look like? Well, this is countywide. You can see at the top that we modeled two feet sea level in this scenario. There's many other scenarios, and these are the things that would be explored in the viewer that I mentioned. But in this scenario, we look at two feet sea level rise, 100-year rainfall event with 20% rain intensification and 100-year storm surge. Why is that important? Because there's a storm surge, nothing is draining. And so, we modeled no adaptation, add adaptation. You can see the exposures are countywide, but they're not as severe as in some of the other areas. But nonetheless, we know that Southwest Ranches has a history of appreciating the need for active water management. The solutions that were modeled provided a 62% reduction of the properties that were exposed to flood damages in this particular scenario. Next slide, please. And here is a map of the solutions that were mapped across the area. So, storage areas, pumps, culvert improvements, canal improvements, in order to derive those benefits. We are, I should share, actively trying to bring money to implementation of the plan. This is a, clearly, a very challenging year to be launching a program of this magnitude. But I would express that the intent is not necessarily implement everything exactly as it's mapped here, acknowledging there could be a pump on the other side of the road. There could be two pumps. There could be an improved culvert here, but what about this neighborhood? All of the investments, so long as they're consistent with the overall strategy or things that we are going to be working, trying to gain support to move forward. The tier one scenario was focused on two feet of sea level rise. The year 2050, tier two was focused on 27 in conditions of three feet of sea level rise. And you can see more plus the bracketing of the volume of investments within the plan that's in the model. Next slide, please. And so, here for Southwest Ranches, I summarized what was modeled. And you can see that the majority falls within swales, storage areas, pump stations, and control structures as the opportunities that exist. We included approximately 50 million, 45 million in anticipated improvements that would be desired in order to support drainage flood protection in the town. Next slide, please. You can see here, and I think that this was an important graphic, because one of the things that we modeled was the amount of additional storage that would be required in individual bases across groundwater counting as we modeled. So, we might have included swales or above the low ground storage, but we took the whole of, what did we model? And how is that assigned across the county? And what you'll see is there are many areas that have much more in the way of volumetric storage that could be achieved and was modeled in the system. Now, again, some of what's modeled is conveyance. And so, the storage, the additional storage is not as substantial in Southwest Ranches. But as I said, it's because you need to preserve what you have. You don't have the same volume of new water storage capacity. You're going to have to retain what you have and work more on storing some within the canals, yes, and moving that water better. But I did pull out south of Southwest Ranches. You can see that the surrounding areas have quite a bit more in the way of storage that they're going to need to derive and have opportunities in some cases because they're more actively redeveloped and actually have higher elevations through that redevelopment, which creates an opportunity that isn't going to exist as well in some of the lower ground areas. Next slide, please. And so, to the question that was raised by a council member pertaining to my statements about the importance of not allowing losses in storage. And you can see an example here. This is not your community. I appreciate that. But you can see the disparity where swales have been flattened through the installation of driveways. They've been planted in. They may not be preserved. I did some quick calculations for your community and the average length of a swale here. And what it means when you lose a swale or swales are impacted, and they can be impacted because they get filled in, they can be impacted because of drives. They might also have impacts associated with patios and so forth. And what we estimate is that minimum, when that type of practice is allowed, and it provides for a 20% increase. And we saw, and we did other calculations that could be more severe, there could be a 40% increase in runoff from properties when you lose the swales. And you can lose the additional storage that has equivalents if it happened across 50 homes. I know that that's quite a bit, but that's volumes of swimming pools that provide additional initial storage. And once you lose that, that water is on your landscape. Now, it's contributing the flooding of the roads. Now, it's threatening the homes. It's creeping up more quickly. So, you're losing the initial storage that you had, and then all the additional runoff is then contributing on top because there's going to be seepage and percolation through the course of the storm. So, those are more complex calculations that one would do to really paint the whole picture of an explicit impact. But I hope that it provides the sense of scale in terms of how important it is to preserve it, how valuable the existing system is when future opportunities are limited. Next slide, please. And so, just to help with that conversation, I want to share, this was something that Hazen had prepared for us. And the blue lines here, they represent our canal network. And what we have happened is that you've got these peaks that are shown in green, and that's how our system kind of operates today, is that we get these peak discharges. Everybody's trying to discharge at the same time. Our canals are just not going to hold up this moving forward. There's just not enough storage only in the canals. And even with the pumps, we're going to have to find ways to store water throughout our community. So, it's about trying to shave those peaks. It's about trying to get rid of them. Optimize storage so that you discharge where you have to discharge, and you take advantage of storage where you have it so you help to lessen out those peaks. It's like trying to make sure not all the traffic's flowing at the same time, but it's, you know, it's expanded over a longer period of time. Next slide, please. So, I just summarized here for you, this is some information that's in the plan. It's also in the economics report. And it shows the relative exposures in terms of modeled annual average potential flood damage. This is an insurance risk. It's not going to happen every year. But your annual exposure with the adaptation strategies shows a 17% reduction for the tier two, an 18% reduction for the tier two, or excuse me, tier one and tier two within Southwest Ranches. And clearly, there are other communities that have a larger reduction, but that's because their upfront exposure is so much greater. And your exposure based upon kind of land use and so forth is a little bit less under those conditions. But it does show the benefit for the town. Next slide, please. This is just an example of insurance rates. We modeled based upon the current FEMA pricing for flood policies. And there's some improvement in Southwest Ranches with the adaptations. But we can see across the board that they're, and this isn't relative today, so that's the difficulty. But the overall point is that we're able to model pretty much the same preservation of pricing that we have today for most of the community. And that means that you can afford insurance and protect with insured assets. Next slide, please. Overall, we did some economics work. I won't run through all these, but these were the economic outcomes that were the benefits derived through plan implementation. So, if you look at tier two, just because it's easier, avoiding 3.6 billion per year in average annual damage that would otherwise occur through unmitigated flood impacts. Preserving 660 million per year in economic activity, nearly a billion in ad valorem, preserving 20 billion in residential real estate value, and, or excuse me, flood coverage of 30 billion value. Next slide. You can just see here the numbers for the town in terms of total modeling improvements as compared to other communities. Again, a function of upfront exposure and the anticipated level of investment that would be needed. So, it's, in this case, better to have a lower number. Next slide, please. And here is the portal to the resilience plan. So, you all and your residents and your staff can access both of the report and modeling at resilientbroward.com. Lots of tools in there, including the viewer and all of the plan documents. Slide, please. And I think this is just the fundamental graphic, but it just acknowledges that flood risk is increasingly, we know, a physical and economic hazard in our community. Storage is going to be critical across the board, but especially so preserving existing storage here in the town of Southwest Ranches. All of the modeling that we did was built upon the existing system. And we erode that existing system. We're producing worse outcomes than what we were originally intending to account for. And I think that that's about it in the way of those estimations. All we're trying to do is present the leadership plan with space. We know that there are big numbers, but not everything gets tackled all at once. Some of that happens through strategic investment, redevelopment, and other. But glad to offline have a conversation of assistance, and I hope that this is responsive to the questions of who is. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gerardo. Appreciate you coming out. Any comments, questions? Go ahead. First, would you take a moment and pitch the Broward Water Leaders and Resilience Program to my peers here? And how important it is for them to come up to speed?
To you, or excuse me, thank you. So, back in 2008, we launched the Broward Leaders Water Academy in partnership with the South Florida Water Management District. The intent was to help ensure that every one of our communities had leadership that was familiar with water resource issues and challenges as a basis for the policy decisions that you all would be making. So, every two years since that time, we continue to offer this academy. It's usually, I think, four half-day sessions with one full day. And we provide field trips as well as bringing a lot of experts in to talk about the diversity of water challenges ranging from sea level rise to water quality for drinking and everything in between. So.
And it's, you were saying that it starts in November?
It'll be. It'll be hosted this year again. It's again, only every two years, and this October, as I understand, it's already been advertised, and it's space limited, and there's no cost in it for our elected leaders, senior administrators, and business leadership as well.
Thank you for talking about that. Just a couple of quick things. I'm glad you were highlighting swales because the town recognizes the criticality of preserving our swales. Something we did, oh, it's just worth, it's 10 years now, or 10 years ago? We have a transportation service program where we resurface the roads. Every time we resurface a road, we also redo the swales on both sides. To the point where some of the projects, we also do catch-based consulting driveways because that is by far our most important way to convey water throughout tertiary drains. We have a particular challenge that I'm wondering if maybe your office can help us out with some ideas on. The laws allow people to fill, I think it's up to 80% of the property. 80% out here is a lot of dirt. The problem is, then, we've got waterfalls under the next door neighbor's property. And that's the way our laws currently read. And I think those determinations aren't made by us. They're South Broward decisions to make. It really seems like as we get more water, it floods the neighborhoods. You know, one person on the street that's got a relatively new house is high and dry, and then 16 houses around them are flooding, and particularly if they have animals, because the animals packed up the block. So, I don't know if you guys have any policy, policies that you can put in place or any county side or anybody can help us make some better decisions on this.
You're right. It's something that we need to work on. We could actually have been working to advance the future getting conditions water storage map through the land use plan. Unfortunately, that bill 180 is going to make it difficult to use our land use plan to advance. That's part of land use, but we still believe we have the opportunities within chapter 27. And I think that the Drainage District's been pretty on board with the requirements there. So, our goal, and we could have a conversation about the 80% number, but the goal would be to require that properties count for the future volume assignment
Good.
as part of what happens through site development. So, that's one of our next responsibilities, is to bring that map to the process because of precisely the type of question you raised here.
Excellent. Last thing I have is, I'm sure you're absolutely aware of the Broward Water Preservation Area out of the proof of 27. I didn't see any representations of that in your forecast. I mean, that's designed to hold a massive amount of water, storage of water.
It's my understanding that we fold the accounting for the presence of the CERF projects as part of the anti-sea condition. We have worked very closely with the South Florida Water Management District on the assumptions and modeling. But let me go back and define exactly what that means because I can't tell you.
Okay. I mean, it goes up about two miles north of US 27. It's massive amount of water storage.
Yes.
Which is a great thing.
And I would note that back when CERF was conceptualized, the secondary canal improvement projects for Broward County were supposed to be integrated in conjunction with that project. And it's become an afterthought. And I think that trying to recover support for improvements across that system is very valid. Not only was it identified as a need 25 years ago, it's interesting we didn't see it reinforced with one of our longings.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out so much.
Dr. Real quick, one question. I am honored to sit with you on the Broward Water 534. Could you briefly explain the cost that this would entail for the movement of water from the Corps of Engineers? I know that county is going after this, but the federal government, they're submitting some type of a major presentation and so forth. Can you tell the people just what kind of cost that is?
So, independent of the work here, everything that we undertook assumes that the primary canal network, which is managed and operated by the South Florida Water Management District, and that includes your sea nine, sea level canals, that that continues to work. That system is already not working, and the Colonel of the Corps of Engineers and the prior Colonel and the prior Colonel all acknowledge that the system's not functioning the way it was designed because of sea level rise. So, advocated for more than a decade, we were finally able to get authorizations. And I won't go through the details, but today, we have a, what's called a section to a brief study. The county put forward $5 million in order to partner with the South Florida Water Management District. The county put forward $5 million in order to partner with the South Florida Water Management District to accelerate that work. We're hoping to have the study done by June of 2026. And we'll be seeking the appropriations and authorizations to advance the recommendations, which are likely to be elevating the gates, the controls and installing very large pumps on every one of the control structures that is currently gravity operated. The estimates for that project, apart from this one, which is 28 billion, is about 2 billion for those pumps and gates. And then we expect public investments on the type of plan that I had mentioned here to be on the order of nine. So you have nine and at least two. So we're looking at somewhere upwards of 10 to maybe even 15 by the time everything's done, the types of investments need to be happening in our.
What do you mean by public investments?
Well, the plan that I had shared with you has a total estimated cost of 28 billion.
Right.
We estimate that two-thirds of those costs, about 18, 16 billion would come from, I think it was 18, would come from through private property redevelopment
Yeah, okay.
and redevelopment requirements that will happen organically.
Sure.
Just as we talked about modified chapter 27, if there's a new requirement, you're designing to the new condition. But the other things that will be required, the pumps, the covers, the control structures, those will need new money.
Right.
And so our desire is to find the comprehensive funding strategy that can support all of these investments that are needed within our municipalities, within our drainage water control districts, and to some extent within the HOAs, the large ones that have management operations, because that's additional infrastructure outside of redevelopment that needs to be addressed.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much. All right, very good. We are very fortunate to have co-compliance individuals that are here in the town. And at this point, we're going to recognize that through a pop mission. And so I'd like to read that into the record for co-compliance officers appreciation week. Whereas co-compliance officers provide for the safety, health and welfare of citizens in this community through the reinforcement of building, zoning, housing, fire safety, environmental and other codes and ordinances. And whereas the co-compliance officers are responsible for improving neighborhood and the quality of lives of the residents in and community. And whereas every day, assisted by support and program staff, they attempt to provide quality customer service to the public for the betterment of the community. And whereas too many times their efforts go unnoticed, even after co-compliance has been accomplished due to their efforts and expertise. And whereas co-compliance officers are dedicated, well-trained and highly responsible individuals who take their job seriously and are proud of their department and the local government in which they serve. And whereas the Florida Association of Code Enforcement, FACE, has declared the first week of June to be set aside by local governments to honor and recognize their co-compliance officers, now therefore be resolved by the Town Council of Town Southwest Ranches the week of June 1st through June 7th, 2025, as co-compliance officers appreciation. So we do that and we very much appreciate all the work and effort that they do. It is truly a very difficult job, a very challenging job, and to do it with professionalism and fairness to all is, is a tough job. I think we're very fortunate for the individuals we have and the job they do. So let's show us their, let's show them our appreciation.
Matt, for a quick picture of you and the mayor and the council.
Okay. Public comment.
Mayor, tonight we have one, some of the public, Noel Hollins, sir.
Lawyers and more.
I get to pull 30 minutes.
You get to pull 30 minutes.
Okay. This is on FEMA and the reaction that's taking place up in Washington. Western North Carolina, which was hit very hard by the hurricane, at the state of Alabama, higher state, having denied FEMA help 100%. We have 83% of FEMA claims according to this paper in Tampa have been denied in the state of Florida on the west coast. At the top of all that, in today's paper, it shows that FEMA flood policy checks in Florida are bouncing. So I urge this council to take all of this into consideration. When they do any more spending of budgets of this state on, I do not think that FEMA will be there for this town or for any town because of what they did to Western North Carolina, which got severe damage. They never saw it coming and were totally unprepared. And their building structures were totally not hurricane resistant 1%. Same thing for Northern Alabama. And then the checks are bounced. So unless you've got your FEMA, then flood control, oh, and very early, you didn't get paid. At the odds of getting paid, they're researching it. And they may pay them or they may not. So I urge this council, put the brakes on almost every project, save every penny because if something happens here, we're going to need every penny, probably without getting any reimbursement. That's scary. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Noel. No further. Great. Thank you. Public comment is closed. Yeah, would you like to, you guys some thoughts on that? Yeah, come on outside, that'd be fun.
From the Marjorie Jr., thank you, Vice Mayor. Of course, we all, my name is Staff of Southwest Ranches, Mr. Johnson, and I'd love to work with you guys. But as far as FEMA goes right now, what's happening is Kevin Guthrie, the Florida Emergency Manager, right now is being tapped to be the head of FEMA. The acting FEMA Director is resigned because he's being fired, so he's one day. But as far as checks not being cashed, they're not being, they're bouncing for a reason because it's called fraud when all the people that's making claims that aren't realistic. As far as picking up debris and taking care of cities, I just bid a 31 mile tornado, it went from Arkansas through the southwest of Tennessee, across the Mississippi, went 31 miles a mile wide with over 1 million cubic yards estimated laying on the ground if there were just devastation. And there's a full declaration from FEMA and the federal government, which is 75%. The state takes care of 12 and a half percent. The city's basically 100%. And that's happening right now in rural nowhere, anything, Arkansas. And the same thing, I just come out of Virginia, which mouth of Wilson area, just north of where Ashville is. We've done 12 counties there, almost a million and a half cubic yards with 10 dump sites in 12 different counties. And we got every penny and made them checks, bounced it all. And that was a large project. You know, just so you guys don't get scared to death about FEMA being not here, you know, FEMA is a good thing for if you're doing the right thing. But it got off the force and they went on to all this fraud, getting mud, houses paid, all this crazy stuff. But that's going to be cut out and the real thing that's used to be FEMA, I think is going to be the main goal. And I don't see anything really changing very much in that area, but I would count on 12% for the city getting in.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that.
Sure.
All right. Any board reports this evening?
Harold Parnitsky, Zero Waste Advisory Board. And just really brief, first of all, it was great to see the representation of Southwest Ranches at the Solid Waste Authority meeting. The town was well represented and having a voice against the segregation. So I think that's very helpful to keep up that pressure there. I would like to highlight also that great work on the birthday celebration last weekend. And Zero Waste Advisory Board had a presentation there as well. And we had 25 or so people sign up for the June 30th cycling tour. Several people have signed up for the compost here as well. So I think part of getting the message out and giving away tours and different things, I think it's just still part of what we're doing and it's working. So great job on the event, Susan, all of you planning that. I know it was a lot of work and it was a great event. In terms of the Zero Waste Advisory Board, most recent board meeting, we had, of course, planning for the birthday celebration, preparation for that. It looks like we're making good progress with that and procurement and the rest of the team on the consultant in terms of the strategy for zero waste planning there. So thank you in advance for continuing to support and improve that. And we're just going to continue to keep the message out and keep supporting all the good things there. We're not going to have a meeting in July, so we'll update on that, but thank you.
Thank you, Harold. Appreciate your help on that. Any other board reports? Counselor, no comments.
Yeah, sorry about.
Go for it.
Okay, just a couple of announcements and a couple of things I'd like to discuss. One is our next hat mat is at the barn on July 12th. We include shredding, prescription drop off, bringing old tires, electronics, stuff like that. Most people know the drill, but for new people, it's great. You just drive up, you really, if you're in a truck and you've got the stuff in the back, you directly get out of the truck, bring it up. Your idea shows you live here. Speaking of which, there's a reader board over by the Shell Station announcing shredding is for the town of Davie, it's not for us. So that is important as to make it that way there. Davie Red Bull's on, but it's right, right there on the I-75 overpass. Just a broad announcement on the farmer's market. It's only going to be on Saturdays now until fall. It's too hot, rainy and we're getting, we're entering that time of year. So they're cutting back on the one day of the week. I just want to mention that there's been a lot of confusion on where we worked a while ago, on Green Meadow Sanctuary Park, on the, what's being built out there right now. The restroom pavilion with parking around it is being built along with the CERF connection. And what most people don't know is that's part of our grant obligations that we have on the park. And it's a must do project. I know Mary, you may want to speak about it later, but you were very right about, it's just going to be the center of our town. It's going to be the center of a lot of activities and we need to do what we need to do to fulfill all our grants. And that's really the second or the last park in the, out of the six parks that we have. They need that done. July 23rd is DMV here. It's been, it's filled, I'm sorry, not July, June has been filled. July 23rd DMV is maybe, you can call it in and go on a waiting list, but we're not sure that DMV is going to, probably the load vehicle is going to be here. Contact Debbie's office for a possible appointment. It's from my understanding, when she explained it to me, it's going to be kind of hairiness for reasons that we're not sure on that. Let's see. Oh yeah, the birthday party, the staff, just want to tell them what a great job they did. It was outstanding. I mean, there was no hiccups, no wrinkles that I could find were mentioned in and weren't looking for any. It just came, all came together at once. The parade was a lot of fun. We all enjoyed it and, you know, can't wait for the next one in about five to 10 years, you know, hopefully. Hopefully. Last thing I want to talk about is what we talked about, we had here last meeting, and that was the workshop on illegal home business. I had the sense, correct, so let me speak up if I'm incorrect, that there was a consensus that we need to do something about it. And I'd like to direct the legal team to start working on it. I think your idea of a time scale, depending on when the illegal business started, had a lot of merit. It's just a question of how we, how we do it if it's one year, six months, one week, you know, two years, whatever it is, on something like that. And I'll let legal come up with some parameters that we can hash out, you know, go back and forth. But like I said, this is going to take all five, all five of the voting. So if somebody has an objection now, raise your hand and I don't want to waste anybody's time. Who's kidding about?
I don't have an objection. You had mentioned, you know, how much time we afford people to resolve the problem they have on their property. I don't know if time is the best way to look at that, but I've been thinking about it since we can't talk about other gear, you know, I've kept it to myself, but somebody who's using a corner of their backyard for parking a couple of dump trucks or something, I mean, that's not something that would take a lot of time. They, they need to find a new location. I'm not trying to discount that it doesn't take time, but somebody who might be running a business on two acres, five acres, 10 acres, much larger operation that they have to find a new footprint for. So another way to look at it isn't necessarily the time and service, but it could be also the amount of property that they're taking up to operate their business. And I think if we wanted, you know, a legitimate way to assess that, if somebody's got a business, then maybe code enforcement needs to drop by to give us feedback on how big it is or
No, good point.
some assessment on how long it will take. Some businesses are very complicated, other ones, my photography business, if that was illegal, I just moved my camera back.
Yeah, I understand. Good point. And I did, you know, we could hash that out.
Right.
Once the, once the legal team and administration come up.
Just give us more food for the vote.
Yeah.
Gary, I, I'm sorry, I just couldn't figure out that circumstance. I'm not able to focus on what's being discussed tonight or what happened. I don't even know what you said, honestly.
Oh, okay. We talked, we were talking about the last, the last meeting, the home business, the illegal home business workshop. And the consensus seemed to be for all five of us that we needed to do something about that. And I wanted to direct the legal team and administration to start a process on that that we can then hash out up here.
Okay, all right.
And, you know, to address, to address that system because we're already working on the dark skies. We're working on several other areas that have been problematic, right away, things of that nature. You know, and this is, I just, just one more piece of the puzzle that we need to address because we're slowly losing the town, you know, big parties, the noise ordinance that we're, that we're working on, stuff like that. And we need to get back to it, you know?
I, I, I'm just.
No, that's right. I was trying.
Not anyway.
We're not, we're not doing anything specific, so I just want to go ahead to give it to the right legal team and.
I may have some objections, though.
Well, I'm not sure we're all, we'll, we just have to hash them out.
Right.
Anyway, that, that, I'll wrap it up for that.
Thank you, Gary. Appreciate that.
A quick, I don't know a lot to talk about. I definitely want to highlight the birthday party and the parade. The parade was really pretty exciting. I haven't been in a parade since I was about 14 years old and maybe 16 years old, so that was a lot of fun. I want to call out Susan Cutts. She led the whole effort. I mean, there wasn't anybody in town hall who didn't work. I mean, there wasn't anybody in town hall who didn't work on it, plus I think they had forty-plus volunteers that all showed up to make the day successful. I was going to suggest we do this every five years, but maybe another twenty-five years from now is the appropriate time, I just probably won't be there. But anyway, that was an excellent event, we've never done anything that large and it was well done. The Zero Waste Meeting, the South, South, excuse me, the Broward County Solid Waste Authority meeting yesterday was the first public meeting discussing the master plan for our fifty-year plan for how Broward County is going to treat our solid waste disposal. And it was a very interesting discussion. For those who have not been exposed to this, but I know some people basically haven't seen. What this is, is right now it's a free-for-all in Broward County. Every city does it differently, there's no one common garbage service for the county recycling. It's done by some cities, we're proud to do it, other cities don't do anything. To my knowledge, we're the only municipality that we're implementing a composting program. All of that stuff is in their future plan, the things that we're looking at, the things that our advisory board is recommending we do here in Southwest Ranches are basically in the plan. There's only one thing in the plan that I think we all collectively and every resident who was there yesterday appears to. There's an incinerator on Orange Drive in four forty-one. It's called the Wheeler Brader Plant, but it's had multiple owners since so it's. That's the only incinerator left in Broward County, and it pranks, what do they say? Reformed any tons a year, go through that, that plan.
Oh, no, no, five, yeah, yeah, no, no, the total was five and goes through that at one point.
One point two, and Steve is on the board for that organization. He's been tremendously influential in taking their thinking away from incinerators for the zero waste recycling and all of us. He's done a super loop of content. But the one thing that was made very clear, and not just by us, I mean, I was very proud that our administration was there. We had about ten residents and most of the council was there as well. So we had a big footprint there, which was fantastic. Everybody from Southwest Ranches was singing from the same song sheet, no incineration. I was very happy to hear the mayor of Mirabarn, just as passionate as we are about doing it because everybody realizes there's only one place left they can build people. That's out at the garbage dump on twenty-seven Insurance Street. We don't want it there, really nobody deserves it there because it's not just going to pollute our town. It's going to pollute whatever direction the wind is blowing, and if you don't, it flows in a different direction all the time. So I think they got the message, we want to make sure that that is taken out of the plan. We'll give them five years to get rid of what's there, to implement their plan. But at the end of the day, I think the winds are still shifting on this. It's not a done deal yet, there's still three more opportunities for the public to speak, I'm going to be at two of those. It's the elements during working hours, and I'd encourage you to go out and participate. Just talk to your neighbors, nobody wants this. I've only heard one person speak on behalf of the incinerators now, who is in that business. So we can use all the support we can, Southwest Ranches leading the charge on this since we heard about it, and it seems to be paying. So I just wanted to give everybody a heads up on that. So you've heard a little bit of talk, we just did groundbreaking over at Southwest Meadow Sanctuary Park. We were all there with our golden shovels to start the project, you may have noticed that their gimmicks of excavation work. They're building a pad, the form boards are going up to pour the slab. Russell, what's the plan completion on this?
Uh, it's, uh.
Probably.
It's like, you said next month?
Yeah, next month.
Next month.
It's, uh. So if you show up in August, you might be the first ones to use a new restroom. It's a nice facility, I mean, it's right in the center of our town, we've done everything we can. Make the bathroom attractive, it's going to be a big one. But at the same time, I mean, it's going to be a pavilion, there'll be a picnic area in there, it's not just a bathroom. It's going to be a nice place to go when you're in the park. Finally, you know, Emile, when it comes to relying on our current government, I'm not as optimistic as perhaps some are. Now, Junior may be dead on, I mean, it may not affect us, it may, we may get our bills paid if we have to pay twelve percent. I mean, that's undoable, but if we have to wait two or three or four years to get that money, I know we have a line of credit in place today, I just wondered if you think it's enough. And I'm not looking for an answer from you right now, just something I'd like you to think about because if, if somebody has a problem with Southwest Ranches, either in Tallahassee or in FEMA in Washington, and we don't get paid for whatever the reasons are, I'm not, I'm not going to even check in on that. It's a lot of money, I think we spent ten million bucks last time there was a hurricane, I mean, it could be triple that this time. So any, I don't know if you have any, oh, Russell, I don't know if you want to speak to it.
No, I was just going to add to something else that you said about the construction schedule, I just understand it's been, it's about six months for construction.
I'm going to hold you to August.
Yeah, Bob, I, by the way, Hurricane Wilma took seven and a half years to be closed.
Yeah, and we paid the freight on that money.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, so, Emile, I don't know if you have any quick thoughts on it?
Yes, sorry, Vice Mayor. It is, it is, it is a significant amount of money that the town is contemplating should something like that were to happen. We are budgeting in accordance to that. At the same time, taking into consideration the amount of time that it would take for reimbursement, which usually ranges from two to three years. We find that the twenty million is more than enough to cover for an emergency. If that were the case, that the town would not be reimbursed for it. Then we will be paying the interest of that loan until we pay it off, if that were to happen. At the same time, the town have savings on assigned bond balance reserve of, over the twenty-five percent threshold that is set up in the bond policy. We currently have about thirty-five percent, so in addition to that line of emergency line of credit, we have that overextension, which we are being very cautious in utilizing. And at the same time, on top of that, any savings that we get going forward is being considered by council during the one-on-one project conversations and all deciding our hash out during that time.
I look forward to it. Good, thank you.
Just to add one other caveat to that, too, with funding on a storm-related, you know, reimbursement through FEMA, typically the way that the process works is that as we incur invoices and we pay them out, as long as we'll meet with project managers and oftentimes we'll get money way sooner, you know, three, four years down the line. What takes the full amount of time that's been talked about is the audit process to make sure that we don't have to give any of that back. We oftentimes get money, you know, within a year. My experience here and also in other municipalities has been that we've got money through FEMA rather quickly. The issue is the closeouts, the private closeouts take many, many years, I just wanted to add to that.
Yeah, one of the things that JR said about it, up in North Carolina and such, were lots of fraud. We're known to be the fraud capital of America in Florida, so it just, I'm sweating it. I mean, Lou made a lot of sense and I think this year the town will buy it, but it sounds like we planned for it, we planned for it. So I look forward to my initial review. Thank you, thank you, Steve. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. Thank you. Bob, let me add a little caveat. Yesterday, there was an announcement news, and, you know, I talked to my H-Way president a couple times earlier. And my H-Way president brought up the fact that there was a loosening of the restrictions on smokestack emissions from coal-fired plants. So I get back to the office, I set the partner up, and I entered in my, you know, chat GPT. Would a waste of energy facility fall under the same regulations, the smokestack regulations, as a power plant? It came up, yes. I'm sorry, that scared the man out of me.
Well, the more reason to get rid of it, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, so that's really scaring me a lot, as we let the proposed put up there. All right, I know I asked you guys a couple meetings ago about speeding issue on Lou Ray. I'm really not in my mindset to talk about that, and I want to go into what happened to me today. Around, all right, I'm working out, I have a cold case, it's such a challenge, I'm busting my butt trying to get feelings out of fire. I get a phone call and representative on the phone says, can I speak today? And I said, that's me, well, I'm calling from Bank America Broad Department. We have a fraud claim, my deposit fraud claim, in case I want to see, check it, it's you. I said, what is it? He said, he had a bill from Apple Store. I'm so, no, it's fraud. So he goes, okay, before we go, let me verify your identity. He sends me these codes that Bank America always sends. It says, verify your identity, BOA, people not call for this code. He goes, can you tell me the code? Boom, okay, code. And he goes through a couple more times, you're getting it, you know? Okay, I want to go in. And I go through the phone call, it was a pretty lengthy phone call, he says, well, we're going to start adding some more fraud protection of your account. And so if any, any charge inside your account, it'll come, it's a learning process, oh, that sounds great. And he hangs up. And maybe two minutes later, he had a announcement, that I approve a transaction. I said, no, all of a sudden, the alarm bells went off. And I started calling back, nobody, but. They had asks to me. And they did street sketch. Bank America said I had to wait nine days, but, folks, if you get a call like that, hang up, say I'm going to call you back, call back, don't trust this, they're bad.
Sorry, you made that, David. Thanks for sharing, it's an important reminder to everybody. I actually got a similar call the same week, so. Didn't happen, but it's out there.
Oh, let me, let me add, let me add, sorry, not once did I give up my password, not once did I give up my password. They got these codes and they presented. All right.
Jim, what do you have for us? First of all, I'd like to say that I was at the dedication this afternoon for the bathroom. A gold shovel, we've got some real nice looking artifacts, I really like those. Thank you, Mr. Sumner, they're really nice, you'll see those when they have a picture come out. But that is a bathroom, it's not a parking garage or a brick cage or any other automobile place. That's what's going around, all right, and when you call people on it and just tell them, why don't you pick up the phone and call your councilman and call the town hall, they laugh at it. So, but it's not a parking garage and it's not a high-rise or anything such as that. It is a bathroom facility with parking in a small pavilion picnic area, pavilion. It'll be great for our area, get rid of those porta potty that nobody likes, so, you know, if you like them, well, you know, move them around or whatever you want, but I think it's great. Second, I did also want to say thank you to everybody, every single person involved in our birthday party was probably one of the best events I've been to in a long time. I would like to see us do it every five years, if that's possible, I don't know. I'll be around for the twenty-fifth and the fifty, so, you know, if you want to wait that long, but five years would be fine if you need. But anyhow, it was just a great thing, all the staff, all the hundreds and hundreds of hours, all the sleepless nights that were put in, especially to Miss Susan, I want to say thank you to everybody for that. And lastly, I want to say that several months back, the board approved a guardrail at one of our bus stops on that road. Fifty percent of the board on that road, the students stand right next to that road. They stand right next to it when they're waiting on the bus, and it was dangerous. And a lot of the parents don't let their students go there because of that. So with the help of council, with the help of Broward County School Board, we are going to put out a guardrail that the students can hide behind, I can stand behind, hide behind, stand behind, whatever. And it would be much safer, and that dedication will be coming up pretty soon. The materials are in, contractors are getting ready to put up, so we'll have a dedication for that with the school board, the staff and all of your town council, so it would be a safer place for our students to be. So with that, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Jim, appreciate that. All right, I just have a couple of things that I wanted to touch on, a lot of it's already been there. You did a great job kind of giving the background on the Solid Waste Authority, I'm actually going to be giving a presentation on that later on in our meeting, so. We should get the introduction on that. You know, that restroom facility, I've also gotten the calls and I've heard the rumors and the things about there. And honestly, you know, that is the center of our town, that's the gateway of our town, that is where a lot of our major events take place. And I think it's awesome that we are really breaking ground and are able to now start putting permanent facilities there that will allow us to do so much more with that property. And this is like just the start of, you know, how we can really start using that property, so I'm excited about it. It's actually more than just restrooms, yes, it is restrooms, but it also has like a picnic area, there's a lot of, there's going to be a parking area in there. It's the kicking off of the whole process, and by the way, it is protecting the wet ones that are already in there. We're aware of those areas and they are being guarded and protected through this as well. So it's an exciting project, I can't wait for it to be done in a month and. No, I can't wait for it to be done sometime this winter, and we'll really go take advantage of it, so it's exciting, so. And I know it's been said over and over and over again, but I got to add my two cents onto it. We had a fantastic weekend, especially with the birthday party. Yes, Susan did a fantastic job, she's been working on it for a long time, but you know what, this was a true team effort. December, I see you there, I know you worked countless hours in getting this put together. Just, and it's not only, you know, I got to tell you that when I talked to the staff, when I was there and communicating with the residents, it was a ton of hours, but what it really was, was the heart and soul of these folks, the volunteers, some of the staff, a lot of our residents. We know other residents there, you know, that just really jumped in there and because they believe in this town, because this is their hometown, because this is where they're raising their families, because this is where they identify their community to be. They just jumped in there and they did a mammoth job, and it was a fantastic day. And we had a ton of residents there that were able to enjoy living in the town of Southwest Ranches. And we had a ton of visitors that enjoyed and wondered what it would be like to live in the town of Southwest Ranches. So it was a fantastic, fantastic day. And from my heart sincerely, I appreciate that everybody did to make it happen. I was so proud to be there as your mayor and representing you because it just was a fantastic day, thank you. All right, with that, let's move on to legal comments.
Thank you, Mayor, no legal comments.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Administration, your comments?
Thank you, Mayor, I have a few comments, so also just to dovetail on to the comments related to the birthday party. Again, can't thank Susan enough, not just Susan, but every member of staff at some measure, whether it was bringing things out to the blind preparation, helping out that day, everybody rolled up their sleeves and did their part, and I really want to thank my staff, I was really proud of everybody's efforts. I also want to recognize some of the outstanding residents that participated. I'm going to leave somebody out, I'm going to leave a lot of people out, so I won't go into every name, just a few names that stand out. It could be Karen French, Leo Espinade, George Morris, there's too many to remember. What I'd like to do is formally recognize them at the next meeting, so actually ask them to come, be present and be recognized. So if you'll indulge us, we'll absolutely do that at the next meeting, thank you. A couple of other items, Mayor, on the BBX Holden P3 project update, we had a meeting today. They are in their final stages of due diligence, I know you've kind of heard this a couple of times, but for no fault of their own, just working with the Army Corps of Engineers, and also some issues. And also some issues uh working through with Broward County. Their due diligence period is just about expiring at the end of this month. Uh, we talked to them today, again, through issues that are not really, you know, uh, made to to their efforts. It's it's just issues beyond them that they're working through that we're very confident that they'll close out. Um, we're asking for basically a extension of that due diligence period for another three months. So if we can get them through so the end of September, uh, we'd like to, you know, basically be able to sign off on one of those as we've done in the past.
Do you want to form a vote on that?
Uh, yeah, that would be great if we can get that tonight.
I thought you had a motion on extending the due diligence period.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I do have a question though, Russell. How are the, why is the Army Corps, I know we've had, we've found agencies.
What did you like?
Sorry. We've found agencies that we didn't realize how to be, how to address this, but why is the Army Corps?
So so there's a water body that's separating the 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 property from the uh property to the east, the Burj Ruh property to the east, that the South Florida Water Management District is considering a water of the U S which has certain ramifications. It's very complicated.
It's complicated now.
I trust me, you preach it to the choir, we get it. So we're enlisting the help of Congresswoman Debbie Wasserman Schultz's office. She's working with us. Uh, we're very confident we're gonna get this. Once they, once the right people look at it, it's very, kind of nonsensical, quite frankly. Uh, but we need them to basically sign off on it. And then there's an issue with Broward County that we're trying to solve as well, related to the access road of a two oh two. So once we get those two, everything else is essentially done. They've worked out the agreement with the Summit Distribution Facility to use the access road. But there's an easement issue that has to be worked out with Broward County.
But a much longer road than we anticipate.
Yes, indeed, but we definitely see the uh, we definitely see the finish line. We're we're very close.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a motion in a second on the floor. Is there any discussion outside?
That was it. Seeing none, is there any public discussion outside? Seeing none, discussion closed. Please call them.
Councilmember Auburn?
Yeah.
Councilmember Jelonsky?
Yeah.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. I'll be signing off on that, so now that I'm in your direction, do that. Uh, lastly, we're happy to report that we have almost fifty people signed up for the composting pilot program. Uh, we are going to have a Zoom uh orientation meeting with the people who have signed up, which is gonna be Saturday, June twenty eighth. Chose the Saturday because many people work during the week and it's difficult to do it at the evening for some people. So we're planning it for Saturday, June twenty eighth, that meeting. We're gonna get that recorded. So those who can't attend, if you're live on that particular day, will be able to be provided with a copy of the recording. As well, we'll have documentation that's going to be provided. Uh, printed out, left in the buckets for anybody who comes in after that date that wants to still sign up. So we plan on starting service on Monday, July seventh. Um, and we'll have additional information that we'll pass out related to that.
I will say that that is the weekend before the Fourth of July. I know some people might be out of town that weekend celebrating the Fourth of July.
Right.
So uh, I guess I'll be looking for the recording.
So it's the weekend, the week before the weekend for the July, June twenty eighth.
Which is kind of part of the long weekend.
It's, yes, it's Saturday, that's the day, right. But again, we will record it, we'll have it documented. We wanted to start services quickly.
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
July, we didn't want to hold it out.
No, for sure.
Quick question, Russell. You say it's it's entirely on Zoom or it's gonna be available on Zoom plus Town Hall?
No, just entirely on Zoom.
Okay. Can you uh include me in that? I'd I'd like to cover this on with.
Sure. Let's send you in by the absolute three. That's all I have, man. Thank you.
Very good. All right, item number ten, please.
Item ten is a resolution by the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches approving the first amendment to the use agreement between the Town Southwest Ranches and the Grant Group LLC doing business at I nine sports. For the provision of use boards for granting to the town, amending the term and use of the site, providing compensation to the town at the end of each season and authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute the first amendment to the agreement, providing for an effective date.
Motion approved, set. Okay, in a second on the item. Is there any discussion in council on this item? Seeing none, is there any public discussion outside? None, please call them.
Councilmember Jelonsky?
Yeah.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Councilmember Auburn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Excellent, thank you. Item number eleven.
Item eleven is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, accepting and approving an agreement with the State of Florida Department of Management Services to receive a Florida municipal government cybersecurity grant for the development and enhancement of a cybersecurity risk management program. Authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement Friday, Friday the fifth.
Motion to second.
Motion.
Second.
Yeah, motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Just real quick.
Yeah.
Very quick, we're doing, yeah. I mean, as we've had one incident of a cybersecurity attack, the threats, I mean, anybody who works in I T systems all day long.
Yeah, it's definitely, it's definitely a rising tide of of risk.
Yeah, and any way we can protect the town, particularly through a grant, that's fantastic.
Yeah. All right, is there any public comment on the side? Seeing none, please call them.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Councilmember Auburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jelonsky?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Excellent. Item number twelve.
Item twelve is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, entering into an agreement with Bergeron Emergency Services as a primary disaster and debris management contractor to provide emergency debris removal and emergency logistical services. Authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement, providing for an effective.
Motion approved. Wait one moment, second. Um, I really appreciate the partnership that we've had with Bergeron Families for so long. Um, just uh great working with you and and working together on these things, Junior. Thank you for being here this evening. And uh, yeah, some thoughts that you might have on this item.
Well, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Um, Ronald Bergeron Jr., founder and C E O of Bergeron Emergency Services. Over three decades of service through the nonprofit nation and international of the BP oil spill to the Haiti earthquakes. Uh, a lot of, lot of, a lot of dedication for many years to get to this point. Things that have done I never imagined I could do, but I'm proud to be here. I'll be here when something happens. You won't be talking to a project manager from a company that's up there, this his general manager, and he's gonna go to his owner. Uh, Russell's gonna call me on the startling saying, I'm over here on one seventy second, we gotta get this thing done. You know what? If that, if you're gonna answer like that, it's gonna be over. And I'm so glad that uh we have that relationship. The staff, they work together great. You guys have been talking about budgeting. Um, if Russell ever wants me to come in, sometimes he catches me in shorts, he puts Fox twenty, he calls, he says, just go sign something up, but no problem. But um, at the end of the day, um, there are some great models around that show you, and we can take some of our unit prices that you would beat me to death up on, which no problem, I understand. But I did get down dirty with my prices because I don't want nobody coming in here. And and y'all don't want to deal with this. There's there's only a few people that really can do this stuff properly. And we, I don't want it, and um I know that uh y'all, y'all wouldn't understand these other people, these other companies, they're so big that there's so many layers of things that happen. But if there's any question about that any of you have on anything with FEMA, pricing, and us putting, if Russell wanted to get together in a few weeks and put some type of budget together on a cap three or a cap two, just so you guys had tangible information. Um, there's great core engineer models that come out that we can put a number on what we got, because we have a full procurement. So um, yeah, and any questions you have? Um, I'd be glad to answer any of them, and I'll tell you, you know, your your old staff, I mean, uh, besides uh, does this the chief, what do you leave here?
Yes.
Yeah, well, sorry, chief, you guys got a great staff. I have a, I have a, he's awesome. Um, and your old staff's awesome. You guys got, I I work with a lot of staff and um you guys make it where it's very nice to be able to um work together as a team because it takes both of us. It's town and happening to make the, you know, like you said earlier, life, health, safety of the general public is the number one thing. And there's one more thing too with that that's that's amazing is the last six years I have not had one piece of litigation from a, from a homeowner, from a state that I've worked for, city municipality, me suing anybody or anybody suing me or the corporation over six years. I haven't had one accident in over six years. Um, my, you know, E M R for insurance is so low, uh, I can be sore by it. I mean, that's, and I'm just very proud to say that. And I might like you guys to feel comfortable knowing that that safety record and litigation record, um, there's not, there's zero. And um, that's that's just an awesome thing, and I'm very proud of that. Any questions you guys got specifically? There's so many moving parts going on right now with, you know, everybody's cutting steam of this, cutting that, nobody really has any idea about anything. Um, so if there's any questions on anything in the town or whatever, um, I'd be glad to answer.
Sure, go ahead. So, Chair?
Yes.
You heard the whole, sorry, you heard the whole discussion on uh our discussion on finances and, you know, how much money we have contingency, how much we have in in line of credit. It sounds to me like it's in the ballpark of twenty seven million or so, give or take. Would you be able to sleep at night if you were up here knowing what you know about the recovery requirements and the cost of that? You know our town very well. So would you be comfortable that we'd be able to fund uh, you know, the work that you need to do, given the money we have?
I would say like cap three, Southwest Ranches is gonna produce about four or five hundred thousand cubic yards. Um, and then we can take that by the unit price um and come up with a number. Um, depending on whether we use a field here and you're in the city grind and dispose it that way, or if we go and um utilize some of uh the fiddling properties for um for dump site, and then you guys, it's out of your hands, out of your hair, it's on your property, it's just, it's just how everybody wants to go about it. Um. So a half a million yards, um, let's see, uh. I don't have a calculator with my, but uh.
Yeah, you're gonna need to put you on the spot.
Yeah, that's fine. And I, I, I can get with Russell and give.
Yeah.
I have numbers.
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
A few weeks, I'd love to.
I'll look at the comfort level between that.
So you're talking twenty seven million?
Yeah, yeah.
So the duck, the dump site's got a price on it and the final disposal, I mean, the hall, loading hall's got a price on it. And we can add that up, but it's two number, Russell, and and it just seems in a cap three for the work. I, I mean, I wouldn't look any harder than that. Um, that's a pretty good number, the cap three. And then add those up and you'll have um, you'll have a, you know, you'll have, you'll have what I would think would be a pretty much a worst case scenario.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we haven't had anything worse than a three as long as I can remember.
We ain't had nothing since.
Up this way.
I remember came to, that one, maybe it was a two right out here, Harvey.
Yeah, there was a three out by the Everglades where I lived.
Yeah. And then Wilhelm, when it came, because that was the, that was um, yeah, that was um.
This is bad.
Insane. Yeah, that was a little hairy there.
I, that's what it was after.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think we're in pretty good, if you got twenty seven million dollars, um, that's a good start. Yeah, and then we can go over more numbers with uh, uh, Russell.
You heard that, Russell? Good start.
Yeah.
See, I, that's a good start, Russell.
That's his, his man response. I'm shocked by that, counsel. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Y'all have a great day.
Yeah, thanks. All right, any other public comment on the side? Seeing none, any further council comments?
Councilmember Auburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jelonsky?
Yeah.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Motion for a cruise?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Excellent, thank you. Item number thirteen, please.
Item thirteen is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, entering into an agreement with D R C Emergency Services as secondary disaster and debris management contractor to provide emergency debris removal and emergency logistical services. Authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement, providing for an effective date.
Is there any council comment on this item? Motion approved, set. Now, is there any public comment outside? Seeing none, please call them.
Councilmember Jelonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Councilmember Auburn?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item number fourteen, please.
Item fourteen is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the amended and restated transportation system surtax interlocal agreement. Broward County, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, town attorney to execute the study agreement, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. And this is the item, the amended item that we'll be voting on. Do I have a motion on the side? Motion approved.
Second.
Motion in seconds. Is there any discussion on the side of the council?
Rodney, would you mind spending a minute just to have explained to everybody what's been done here?
It'd be, uh, my pleasure to do so. This is the uh essentially the long awaited third amendment to the interlocal agreement with Broward County for the surtax program. Basically, the, to cut right to the heart of it, this amendment is something that the cities have been asking for. It's a way for us to be insured that we have money that would go to all the cities on an annual basis and not always be subject to this kind of challenge grant process where some cities would have been frozen out, quite frankly. So this would give uh and establish what they call a minimum annual guarantee of of the surtax, which amounts to about ten percent of the proceeds that would be put into this minimum amount guarantee. From that money, that's going to be split up amongst all of the member cities based on center lane miles. That's the formula. So based on the projections that we've seen, the town should expect on an annualized base, on an annual basis, to receive somewhere in the neighborhood of about five hundred thousand dollars over the year. That's in addition to whatever we might also be uh I don't want to say, I'll say fortunate to get as part of our challenge grant process. So the projects that we're submitting for funding for, let's say, you know, capital projects that that are eligible, uh, those would, that would be in addition to the money that we would be getting on that basis from this program. So I think it's a really good thing for us to sign and approve and uh to win for us money that we can apply towards TIS or whatever our town council desires to do.
And this is all part of the County Met Association, putting this together.
Yeah, this has been a year long, a year long negotiation uh with the county. They first, you know, basically the city managers got together and kind of developed this idea. We had negotiations with Broward County. Thankfully, the county administrator, Monica Saperro, supported. We worked collaboratively with the county on this. The attorneys for both the county and the cities got together and came up with this construct, and that's what, and that's the story.
Any.
This is all proceeds from, yes, this is all proceeds from the extra penny surtax program, correct?
Thank you. Excellent, thank you.
Now, Mayor, when I first heard of this at the Broward County City's meeting, uh, they explained, and it was really a nice way that they explained it, complete detail and all. And then they handed everybody an envelope, so I was able to bring a check back to the town for somewhere around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You know, that, that's the second largest check I've ever held in my life, but it'd be nice for the town to get that every single year or so as a base, and then from there we go on.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, uh, that council members see they, a big ceremonial check. It wasn't a, it's just. But I heard it still tried to take it to the bank.
Three different, thank you. Three different.
Butcherio fish, uh, kitchen.
All right, thanks, Jim. All right, um, any, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, uh, please call them.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Councilmember Auburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jelonsky?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Absolutely.
Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Excellent. Item number fifteen, please.
Item number fifteen is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, adopting a public policy consistent with Florida law and providing for separability and providing for an effective date.
Motion approved, set. Motion in a second. Uh, one of the things that uh I asked Russell about when I read through this item here was to make sure that uh this didn't, wasn't some sort of a unfunded mandate that all of a sudden we can do. But it's really more formalizing our 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 standard practices today and putting them into formal uh agreements. So so I'm very grateful. Any, any other council comments?
Just great job, Deborah, on keeping on top of this because it's it's all for the good of the town.
Any public comment on that? Seeing none, please call them.
Councilmember Auburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jelonsky?
Yeah.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Excellent. Item number sixteen, please.
Item sixteen is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, adopting a public records policy consistent with the Florida law, providing for an effective date.
Motion approved. Second. Motion in a second. Is there any uh council discussion? Item?
I think this is really, really important.
I think this is really, really important.
It is.
And being the subject of this many times.
So, so I did have, uh, just a, please, some question for you. What changes for us, you know, what, what's the significance? What's the significance of this in terms of your department's operations?
Public garbage policy is, um, it addresses public records requests. And basically it's just also formalizing what's already in Florida statutes. We're putting together a policy, uh, that we're formalizing. Russell, have you been able to explain it better?
Uh, Deborah did a fine job, but basically what it does is it formalizes it for consistency purposes. We just wanna make sure that every records request has a policy that it needs to follow. And so that we always adhere to the same policy. It's transparent for the residents, for those who are requesting records. They all have an understanding of what the policy is before they even make a request, and should they wanna know.
But I guess the question is, does it impact your department operation?
No, she's, it's already doing what she's doing right now. It's just basically formalizing it and adopting it for health.
I know they're busy. I just hate to see them be more busy based on a state mandate.
No, no.
Good, that was kind of my question about a, uh, it was an unfunded mandate, I had to do, but yeah, it's just formalizing what they're doing so that it's documented and, uh, listening to you. All right, excellent. Is there any public comments, item? Seeing none, we can please call it over.
Councilmember Jablonski.
Yeah.
Councilmember Gudzinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Auburn.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Hartman.
Yes.
Mayor Brad Cruz.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Great, thank you. Uh, item number seventeen is a discussion item and, um, I'm not sure. We have basically a couple of different versions of this and we wanted to decide how we really wanna send out this letter.
Basically, that's, that's correct. So we have a, a version A and a version B of the resolution that was approved. Uh, at a previous town council meeting, there was some discussion about the interpretation of how, um, the language and direction from council. Uh, we just wanted to make sure that we encapsulated properly what council's, um, you know, intent was for that resolution. So we provided an option that was, uh, created just after the meeting, after what we understood was the motion and the subject, that's option, that's option A, right? Uh, I believe so. Is that correct, Deborah? Is it option A, that version, your move?
That's what I read. That's what it sounded like to me.
Yeah, that's correct. So version A was the one that was captured from the motion. And then there was subsequent discussion about intent and so a version B was created. So again, uh, just, I'll just draw a couple of, um, you know, some, some, I guess, comparisons. In version A, uh, there was discussion during the day or during that evening about the language and whether or not the town should take a strong position and oppose the project altogether. And I believe, Mayor, you made some comments that you were concerned with using the word opposed and you didn't wanna see that in that, in that final version because you felt that maybe, uh, I'm sorry, if I'm...
No, I'm having a... I'm explaining my position.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, so, so then, I guess, the subsequent version, it had the word opposed in it. So that's just one quick, uh, paragraph. There was also mention in, uh, the second one, there was language in there about a sidewalk to nowhere. Um, obviously that, you know, there is a sidewalk there on the east side of what the project is and also further west of, you know, seventy-five, that Sheridan Street sidewalk does carry. And in fact, when I spoke to the, um, project engineer, Richard Fortnese, he said that is a Broward County code requirement that if they are going to do any kind of modifications, that sidewalk has to be part of it. So, uh, sidewalk might not have been something that we're used to seeing, something that we would want. If it's a Broward County funded project, it has to include. Couple of paragraphs.
Yes.
I was looking at this and it, um, yeah, it, it affects a lot of residents that, um, from my district. Um, I see the difference that A has the opposition of the sidewalk, E does not.
And A has a sidewalk, B just on.
So here's my thoughts on it. Um, number one, we only get to talk like once every two weeks.
Correct.
So when we have our conversation, we come to a consensus on something, um, I feel like we've made a decision. I'm a little uncomfortable that after that's over, that outside of the council, the direction gets changed and we have to talk.
Right, right.
I, I'm not comfortable with that. Um, my, my, my thought overall is this, is that, um, we have a history, we have a history of being very independent, which is an awesome thing. It's kind of who we are and, and I get that. But, um, when we work with the county, we have to work with the county. We, we can't ask the county to do, do things the Southwest Ranches way. Um, we can certainly ask for our influence on them and if it's, and frankly, if it's, you know, if, if it's critical to us, then that's critical to us and we'll fight it to the very end. Um, you know, I, I use the sidewalk as an example, but this is a sidewalk that's not even in the ranches. It is, it is how they do their roads. Um, to ask, basically, we're saying, Pembroke Pines, don't put it in sidewalk because we don't like sidewalks. I, I just don't think it's reasonable, to be honest with you. I don't think.
How it is free.
You know, um, now it's sound wall, there you go. That's important. I'm, I'm willing, you know, I'm willing to fight for that sound wall. And, and frankly, as we discussed last time, you know, focusing this more on the turn lane than anything else, I think is critical. So, so I would focus on those two things because I think that's what's gonna be most important to our residents and not, not, you know, not die on a hill that's not that critical to us from, from other perspectives.
One of those are in, on the second one. Second one is not the wall, it's not in the second one.
Well, it's interesting because I remember residents that were here, I think there were three or four families here.
Yep.
Four people. And they were saying they were not in favor of the sound wall. They didn't wanna look at the back of the sound.
Oh, maybe that's why we took it out.
Yeah, okay.
So I, you, thank you for reminding me. So I do remember that now. So, so, and I, and I think, yeah, they, they were much happier with the, the, the bushes and, right, a natural, what area were they?
Vegetative.
Vegetative, yeah. So, so that's still, so let's not have any, so, yeah, so.
B's it.
But are we being nice, buddy?
Well, so, well.
No, B is it.
Yeah, so I think, I... I think B, I'm sorry, I think A, uh, captured the motions and maybe if, if that needs to be augmented, we can do that. So if we can kind of quickly, if you, if you don't want to just indulge us, so we get it right one last time and be done with it this, this one last time. So if I can just quickly read it, I won't read the entire resolution, but I'll read the sections because that's really the meat and potato out of this motion. So what this says in section two is that the town council formally, hereby formally opposes, not the whole project, but opposes the installation of light poles on the north side of westbound Sheridan Street from Flamingo Road to Southwest one forty-eighth Avenue, which will cause light pollution spilling over and negatively affecting the residents and property owners.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, so let's stop there for a second. Now, my personal thought on that is, once again, this is not in the town of Southwest Ranches, but we need to protect the ranchers there, right?
Right.
So I think to oppose the lights altogether is not reasonable. This is, this is not in our town. Um, however, I think what we should do is, is look for shielding there that is going to protect our town. So, so rather than opposing the lights, we should compromise and say, we need, we need shielding.
Yeah.
And that, that's our recommendation.
Because if they don't put it down our side, they're gonna put brighter lights in the middle of the road and probably without shielding, we're, we're, we're even worse. Right. So I think to continue and recommend the shielding is the way to go.
Yeah.
Are, are we all good with that?
Yeah, so what you're saying is that using a policy to say we're not.
No, 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 no. What I'm saying is, is that we're, we basically were saying, we recognize that you're putting up lights there and our recommendation is that you put shielding on to protect our, to kind of, and I would reference our nights, our dark sky ordinance, that we don't want this to, um, violate our, our, our dark sky.
Yeah, I mean, it does, it does talk about the, you know, the concern about light pollution spilling over on Broward.
I was simply saying shielding.
Shielding, yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay.
So then we'll, we'll...
No hesitation on that.
Right. So then on, on section three, it says the town council hereby formally requests the implementation of noise reducing measures through the construction of a sound barrier wall along the north side of westbound Sheridan Street to protect the residents and property owners on Old Sheridan Street from increased noise pollution caused by the name Sheridan Street.
I don't think we're supportive of that, okay.
Not a barrier.
Not a barrier, right. Vegetative barrier, not a sound barrier.
Yeah, I really, I really have to say, it depends on where that wall goes. If the wall goes on the south side of the vegetative area, residents, I'm saying, just can help. Because, I mean, it's pretty heavy vegetation there, even when we cut that.
Yeah, no, I get what you're saying.
We know where the wall would go.
I get what you're saying. How do, how you express that, though?
We're only happy with it. Yeah, no, I, I get it. It's, it's taking with it.
Well, it's almost one or the other.
Yeah, it's almost that.
Yeah, yeah, hard to, now, now we're getting into the science of it.
Right.
Yeah.
We can go that way.
I know, I don't.
But they're happy with the way it is now. So if we recommend a vegetative barrier, they'll get more than what they have right now.
And, and maybe that's what we should do. Maybe we should just, uh, emphasize that we want to continue with the significant, significant vegetative barrier that's in place.
Any enhancements?
We do, we have one very good advantage. I've noticed this for like twenty years driving over there. Nobody maintains.
Right, which is an awesome thing.
It grows, it just grows like, oh, and so it just really helps out. So, um, at the time.
We put that in the letter. We want to continue to not maintain.
The spirit of goodwill.
But I mean, seriously, I mean, it was, it was just so wild.
Yeah.
You know, years.
That's not a lot of light.
You got something there?
Yeah, we got something there. We'll address that. And item four or section four, the town council hereby formally requests the reallocation of design plan and construction funds for a ten-foot sidewalk along the north side of Sheridan Street to instead fund the improvement of the left-hand turn lanes from eastbound Sheridan Street onto the northbound Flamingo Road.
We remove re, offer that word, reallocation, instead of just allocation.
Yeah. I don't think we want to, we just recommend they do that as opposed to trade.
Right. Okay, so we wanna leave that in there.
I would, I would like to say some wording that, you know, through, um, our, our experience, one of the key issues is the turning lane there and we would recommend that, be look at to see.
So what we would really be saying here, we formally request the allocation of the, of funds for the ten-foot sidewalk along the north side and improvement of the left-hand turn lanes.
I wouldn't have to reference the cycle.
But ten, cycle go.
I mean, it's, we're, we're not gonna be able to change anything there and then we're not trading that.
Okay.
Could have deleted from the plan.
So we're just gonna ask them to fund the improvement of the left-hand turn lanes from eastbound Sheridan Street.
Okay, yeah, this, we think that should be a priority.
Okay.
And maybe you wanna encapsulate it as a priority to us.
Sorry, sir?
Uh, maybe you wanna reinforce that it's a priority to us, not just, we're looking for it. It's, it's very important to us to make this project successful.
Okay. And then there is, um, kind of a section that says that the town council hereby formally requests that all reasonable effort be made by Matt Brower to address the concerns as described in this resolution during the design phase of the Sheridan Street capacity expansion project. Stay in there.
Yeah.
And then that, that's pretty much it. The other one just said the town works, directed to send a copy of this, so. Um, well, I think with those changes, I think it encapsulates what the town council's intent is. We'll make those changes and we'll send it.
Great, perfect.
David, you're comfortable?
I am.
Good.
All right.
Yes.
Item numbers, that was item number seventeen. Um, Mayor, time, I guess, before we shut down the show. So, on, uh, this discussion item, just a couple, uh, legal points on that I just wanna put out there is number one. Uh, this is, would require variance, as, as everybody knows, that's a costly judicial process. So we, we can't get into any specifics here. Um, the form, the proper form for the applicant or the property owner would be to make an appointment with, um, the town planner, Jeff Cadence, and Mr. Cadence can walk through some of the process, go over what the criteria is, the application timeframe, and that, and answer all of their questions pertaining to the application and variance. Right, so for any purposes of discussion today, it would just have to solely be in general terms of not dealing with this particular property or anything of that.
Sure, great. Thanks, Richard, for sharing that guidance. Um, I'm just gonna say a couple of words and then we're gonna move on. Don't wanna put anybody else at risk talking about a particular property. I'll just say, as you said, this is a variant, this would be a, a variance. There is a variance process in place for whichever residents, if, if they, if they saw something that they felt was not right. I think, you know, a lot of times, um, regardless of the situation, our codes are excellent codes and they're all there for a reason and they, they make good sense. Uh, every once in a while, something will happen and, you know, ninety-nine percent of the times it works and one percent it doesn't and that's where variance might, might or might not be appropriate. Um, and so, uh, you know, I think that, uh, it's, it's up to us to take a look at that in those situations when a variance might go up and, and, and take a, a fresh look at it and, and make, make a judgment call on it. So I look forward to this coming forward so that we can do that. Am I good? Said that all right?
Yes.
All right, okay. You went in full, I might, no, I didn't, I didn't throw. All right, um. All right, the next item is also an item that I, I wanted to put on the agenda itself. Has been referenced a number of times. We have, um, uh, you all have given me the honor to serve as the member of the governing board and then I was elected to the executive committee of the Solid Waste Authority. And we've been working for two years to, to determine a, a master plan for how we are going to really develop, uh, solid waste handling for the next forty years and really forty years and beyond. And, um, so we have been working diligently at that and, um, and it has been a lot of work. There's been, uh, a lot of, uh, a lot of research and paperwork and a lot of, uh, information that we've worked through. And, and over the, over the last, uh, little under two years, we have now come up with a draft of the, uh, master plan. And so, uh, what I wanted to do was be able to, um, share that with the town, get it on the record so that, uh, residents could see this, uh, could reference it later and, uh, come on, uh, you know, see it on YouTube if they can't make the meetings. And so, um, I'm gonna go through it. I'm not gonna do the whole presentation, uh, because it's not really necessary. I'm gonna focus on the, on the elements that are key to the ranches and, um, and then I'll skip some other parts that are just more general information. So this is, uh, you can see that the presentation here is item task number eleven. There's, out of eleven tasks, there's a lot of work to be done. Um, let's skip ahead to slide number four, please. Okay, a slide here. I wanted to point out a couple of things here. So, um, the critical things here is right now, we recycle thirty-nine percent. This is talking about Broward County, not Southwest Ranches, uh, Broward County. We recycle thirty-nine percent of our debris. And, uh, the state of Florida has... I just saw some, I looked at this, I looked at this presentation, I don't know, a hundred times and I just realized that the, uh, that that's, the goal is seventy-five percent. Um.
Correct.
The graph is totally wrong. It's interesting. It shows like sixty-six percent, but anyway. Trust me, the number is right, not, not the graph. The, the number is right, not the graph. So, um, but the state of Florida actually passed, uh, a, a bill that said that all the counties should be at seventy-five percent by twenty-twenty. Well, obviously we're past that and we're at thirty-nine percent. And, and by the way, there's only three counties in all of Florida that are at seventy-five percent. And so we have a lot of work to do. And so this is our goal, um, to get from thirty-nine percent to seventy-five percent. Frankly, um, in talking to, uh, the residents of our town, really our goal was to get from thirty-nine percent to a hundred percent. And, uh, the state of Florida has, has chosen the goal of seven, seventy-five percent. So, uh, if we can, uh, go through from there, just a couple of slides to slide number six. So this is, this is where we've been as an overall process, uh, the different tasks. Uh, I'm not gonna walk through them all. Just wanted to briefly go through them because we have been going through this. This is why it's taken a year and a half to get there, going through all these different tasks, the different reviews that the system needs. Next slide. There, see, uh, there's several more tasks. I'm not gonna go through them all. The next slide. And this is where we are, task number eleven, um, actually producing the, the draft master plan itself. And then the draft master plan is the initial go based on all the research we've done. This is the initial attempt to say, this is the path we wanna go. It's not the final. Um, that's why we're doing the public meetings that were mentioned earlier. We've got two more of those coming up next week. And, uh, if you can attend, that would be fantastic. And one is in the east, one is in the west, and, uh... And one is in the east, one is in the west, and, uh, for county. And so we'll be gathering more public input on those, and we would love to see the public out there. Please go ahead and keep going forward. And so the goal is to move forward to the point where we actually then implement the plan. See what happens with this. These next, all right, next, next slide. All right, so this was some of the information that was, uh, referenced earlier. Um, as you can see, we do have about, um, almost five million tons of, uh, waste that's generated in Broward County each year. Um, currently, uh, um, let me throw it over here. You can see basically half a million of those is going through the waste, the incinerator today, the extension. Um, two point eight, almost three million tons is going into landfills. And so, and we say landfills, uh, there's basically two locations for that. One is Monarch Hill over there in Coconut Creek, and then the other one is kind of an our back door over here.
Some of that go to the passional account.
And so, yes, yes, and some is, and is trucked out as well. You're right. And, uh, so basically, um, what's happening now is this is more recent, recent changes in the last ninety days, the county has, has voted so that only, uh, C and D construction and demolition debris is going to the Monarch Hill. Basically, what's coming over to the landfill that's near us is, um, the, uh, the green debris, and also some, uh, appliances and things like that are also going here, but none of the compostable waste from your kitchen type debris. So, um, all right, we'll go over there. Uh, next, next slide, please. So this is an interesting slide. I just want, uh, everybody, let's focus on the right-hand side, the residential. And, uh, what you can see is in the blue, this is the, um, of all the debris that's produced from residential, um, a little over thirty percent of it, there's been determined could be, could be recycled if we, if everybody, if we really had our act together and, uh, and we were able to do it. Um, there's another, uh, third of it that is compostable, which, um, is huge, and then there's another thirteen percent which is, uh, divertible, which means if we could do other things with it rather than it ending up in the landfill. And then there is, uh, the twenty-one percent, twenty-two percent that is, um, uh, going to be very difficult to work with. And that's going to be our challenge, hopefully, in twenty-five years, we'll be focusing on that. But for right now, we need to really deal with this seventy-eight, seventy-nine percent so that we can get to the seventy-five percent. Okay, next slide. Uh, this is C and D, I wanted to just talk about this one briefly because C and D is huge, uh, not only in because it is, uh, um, it's, there's so much of it, uh, we keep rebuilding things, but it's also the heaviest component. So, and, um, when we, when we determine percentages, it's by weight, it's by tonnage. And so this is a lot of tonnage. And so if you can make headway on C and D, you've made headway in the overall effort by quite a bit.
C and D means what?
Is construction and debris. Construction and demolition debris.
Yeah, yes.
And, uh, so basically, this is, uh, if you renovate your house and you have one of those big dumpsters that comes by and you put all the, all the debris in there and it goes away, uh, the question is, where does it go? It doesn't really disappear. And so, um, so being able to segregate that out with the concrete, and then crush it, reuse it, um, move the glass somewhere, move the metal somewhere, um, is, is a big deal. There's another big deal with this, basically, on the construction side, when you build it in the first place, to be able to build it in a way that can be deconstructed and recycled as opposed to just having a big pile of debris there. So this is, this is actually, right now, um, the county is just starting to work on this. This, more than anything else, is the low-hanging fruit, that with just some, some new equipment and some greater care, we can make a tremendous amount of progress on this. Okay, next slide. This is an interesting slide I wanted to talk a little bit about. You can see that, um, the way the, uh, the governing board is split up is in, from large members, medium members, and small members. Um, you can see Southwest Ranches is there in the middle of small members. Out in the beach, that is small members, I don't know, but anyhow. Um, but what we can see here is that we are a very small fish in a very large pond. And I wanted to bring this up because I just wanted to say thank you to all my fellow minnows that are out there, swimming out there, because, um, we have created a lot of waste in that very big pond, and you all have done an amazing job. This just points out how, uh, how awesome a job you all were doing. So, and next slide, please. All right, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this. I just say, basically, these, these are the guiding principles. Um, we want to be able to, as a county, we want to be able to not be under anybody else's thumb, we want to be able to manage our own destiny. Zero waste is not just something we talked about, it is a focus of distribution, has been from day one and on, and it's growing more and more part of the conversation.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, it's been a team effort, but thank you. Um, the environmental growth, uh, long-term disposal solution, we want to make sure this is not something, one of the issues about bringing, um, the debris up to a county up there eventually, I don't know when it'll be, it could be ten years, it could be three years, it could be twenty-five years, eventually they're going to say enough, everybody always does. And so we've got to be able to come up with a solution to where we can, we can have our control of our destiny, um, operational excellence, uh, harmonization, harmonization of services county-wise is important. And I'll tell you why that is, is because right now, um, there is no county discussion on recycling, because everybody does it differently. You know? Or doesn't do it at all, yes. And so, so we can say, this is how we recycle, and somebody literally a mile down the road and say, no, it isn't, we don't, we don't do that, and somebody a mile in the other direction says, well, we don't do it at all. And so we've got to be able to, if we're going to educate the county to say, this is how we recycle, this is how we want you to recycle, this is the best way to recycle, we've got to have harmony around the, the county to be delivering the same message. All right? And obviously, we want to get the most we can for our money. Um, next slide. All right, let's, uh, let's skip ahead. Slides, uh, let's stop here, yeah, just, um, well, I already talked about this, keep going, this is slide twenty-two, please. All right, no, here, I'm sorry, go back. So, this is the county, or the useful part of the county, and, um, if you focus on those three dark blue circles, those are the, those are the keys that I want to focus on. So those are, the, the top one up there is the Monarch Hill landfill, which I've mentioned. Um, the next one down below, almost straight south of that, is the Broward County South, uh, uh, recovery facility. Okay. That was.
Oh, I think it's with its name.
Oh, okay, there we go, that was interesting. Um, and then the third one is the Broward County landfill. Um, those are really what has been identified as areas of the, um, where major facilities can be put. And the reason why I wanted to bring this out here, and this is more from Southwest Ranches viewpoint than anything else, is, um, we, obviously, that one out west that we're very familiar with is in our backyard, we, um, I want to do the right thing for the county, but at the end of the day, I'm the mayor of Southwest Ranches, so I want to guard our town. And, um, and so that facility there, I think, is being used in, in a proper way, and that is green debris that is going out there, um, which does, uh, break down, and, um, and it's also, there is capacity that is set aside specifically for what we were talking about tonight. If there's a storm, they've got to have a place to do it, they've got a place to put it. I don't know if you all are aware, this, this comes up all the time in SWA meetings because that's what we talk about, but, um, when Milton came through last year, um, Lee County had a very similar situation where they had a facility like this, but, um, Halleed had just come through and they filled up, they ran out of space, then Milton came through a couple of weeks later, they had no place to do it, to put it, and so they literally put locks on their, their facility because they, they didn't want any more debris in there, and, um, they couldn't find a place to do it and to place it, and the federal government came in literally with, um, chain cutters and took the locks off and said, pile it in there, and you've got to have a place to put it. So this, this facility here, um, one of the things that I've been doing is, is bringing up on a regular basis, we've got to protect this facility for those storm situations, we can't get in the same place that Lee County was in, um, because at the end of the day, that type of debris is much preferred over alternative types of debris, or if that was to be converted to an incinerator. So we're protecting that, it is in the best interest of the town, it is in the best interest of Broward County, and, and that's, uh, an important strategy that we're using, we're going to pull that out. Um, next slide, please, or twenty-two, please. Okay, so I think we're pretty familiar with this, but I just wanted to touch on it anyway. So this is, uh, just the super, super high view of waste that's generated. Obviously, um, we focus as a town on certain areas of this, uh, the reuse policies and programs, I wish we had more control over that. Uh, a lot of that is governed by Tallahassee, unfortunately, um, but we are getting obviously better and better at, um, picking up things that we, that we can reuse. Um, diversion programs, uh, slide, uh, obviously the landfill, we're familiar with that, that's close, but the conversion process is, um, I want to touch on that just for a minute as well. I, I just want, I just want to say once again that, you know, I go to these meetings and, and Bobby, we're very, very close on it, um, I'm, I'm only aware of a couple other municipalities all over our county that do composting, there are, there are a couple, but, but we, but we are, we're on the leading edge of what we're starting. I really, really encourage folks, if you're, if you've thought about composting, please join in, um, to do the composting programs, I haven't caught you a penny, the town is, is, uh, footing the bill, and, um, and it's, it's part of an education and a habit-changing process that's really important for us as a town to do, so that, uh, we eliminate that from the waste stream that would eventually go into a landfill somewhere. All right, and next slide, please. Okay, so this is, this is what, uh, this is kind of what it all comes down to. So when we first started the, the draft master plan, we had these, uh, five different scenarios, from A through E, and, um, just for general, just so you can kind of get the general lay of the land, scenario B and scenario C are the ones that have a waste-to-energy incinerator in them. And so, um, obviously, that was, uh, that was the, uh, first thing we wanted to really steer the, the committee away from, and I think we've been very successful in doing that. Um, if you look at the, the, the second row at the very top, so the first row is the different scenarios, the second row is the projected, uh, diversion rate. And so, um, the goal is to get to, uh, seventy-five percent. And you can see, one of the, one of the battles there is that the only two scenarios that get us to seventy-five percent, um, are the two scenarios that have the, uh, incinerator involved. And so, um, but my thought on that is that this is a journey, this is not something we're going to implement and then next year we're done. Um, this is a journey, there is all kinds of new technologies that are coming out that I think are going to prove to be far superior to incinerator, and so frankly, we're at thirty-nine percent. If we could get to fifty percent, or fifty-five, or heck, if we could get to sixty-two percent in scenario A, we've done a whale of a job. And it's going to take us five or ten years to get there, and by then, I think we will have some new options to us, other than incinerator, that will be able to get us to seventy-five percent. So this is, this is a, a journey, and, um, and I feel very good, um, getting behind scenario A and, um, riding that for at least, uh, you know, six to eight years, seeing what the technology is that comes out, and, um, and I think we'll have some new alternatives, some better alternatives, some cleaner alternatives, some more zero-waste type alternatives that will be available to us at that time, and so we can continue to press forward. So that's, that's kind of our strategy.
Why that scenario?
Uh, so scenario E is, is a, a good scenario, um, I'm trying to remember the details on it. Basically, the, the problem with scenario E, as you can kind of see in, uh, so the, the graph down below, um, the, the green means that it's, it's easy and likely to do, yellow means it's moderately, but we can probably do it, red means, um, it's very, very difficult to do.
Expensive.
Expensive, exactly. And so, um, so we, we need to find, one of the keys to making this successful is that it's, it's economically sound. And so if, one thing we've learned through the whole, um, RRB, uh, real elevator process is if, it's going to cost the municipalities a lot more, municipalities are going to pee a lot, they're not going to participate, they're going to do their own thing, and it'll fail. And so that was the problem with scenario E.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, and then, uh, if we can just go to one more slide, slide thirty-two, this basically just goes into more detail on it. All right, thirty-two. So, so this is basically, this is scenario A, the recommendation. Um, so basically, it's, it's restoring the recycling services to the remainder of Broward County, believe it or not, twenty percent of Broward County does not recycle at all. Um, uh, segregating the curbside waste, um, which, uh, basically, you know, I, I, that's something that I think, I, I bring that up, it's on this, I think that's something that we need to be looking at in our next contract with WM, is, is, um, saying to them, that's important to us, that the yard waste is separated from other wastes so that it can be properly dealt with and not all just mingle together and, uh, and handle that way, so we want to highlight that. The food waste, I'll just say one more time, please, 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 if you're not signed up for the compost, please do that, that's something that's under our control. Um, for the permanent house, household hazardous waste, we do an exceptional job at that. Four times a year, please take, you, you know, make use of that, that's already there. Um, add reduction, reuse, and diversion programs, policies, uh, that's something the county can do, and then, um, consider, consider reducing just their general waste as, as, as a whole. One of the nice things about this is as this becomes more, more, uh, ingrained in us and becomes, uh, more of what, a habit that we, we do all the time, all these things, that the regular waste will just naturally decrease and go away. But once again, I just, I need to call out this town, this town is amazing. We, look, look at, this is, this is the scenario of things we should be doing. Number one, recycling, we're doing it. Number two, we're close and we can do, we can improve on that. Number three, doing the, the composting, we've been putting that in place. Number four, the household hazardous waste, we're doing that. We are on the leading edge, folks, and it's, it's awesome to be able to be able to sit here and report that back to you. It's like the rest of the county has a lot of work to do. We've got a little bit of work to do, but the rest of the county has a ton of work to do because we are already well ahead of her. Great job by everybody, so. All right, well, thank you for letting me run through that. Um, I wanted to get that on the record, and, um, uh, I think, uh, I'm proud of all that we're doing there, so. All right, item number twenty, please. So I, so I'll just continue on, so, um, y'all are getting your minds worked tonight. Um, so, uh, we've got approval minutes from February twenty-seven, twenty-seven of this year for a regular meeting, and March thirteenth of this year for the regular meeting, we can do those together. Are there any additions, corrections to those minutes?
Motion approved of both.
Set. Motion, spoken on that. Any additions, corrections to that? Seeing none, any public additions, corrections to that? No, seeing none. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzensky?
Yes.
Councilmember Obrina?
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Brightcrute?
Yes.
Minutes passed.
On your turn.
Your turn.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.